Let's call the order.
Nancy Kupka.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
I'm here.
I am glad.
I'm glad the rest of you are here as well.
Yeah, I'm feeling pretty lucky. Okay, we have a quorum. That's the Stanford, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Probably add our student board members to the list.
We can do that.
PJ, are you here?
Ms. Banker, are you here?
The first rule of order is to get an approval of minutes for the September 18 business meeting, the September 18 closed meeting, the October 2 special workshop meeting, and the October 2 course meeting. Sorry I'm late.
I move the minutes be accepted as submitted. Approved as submitted.
Second motion.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Terry Pavisic.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
And Nancy Kupka.
Hi, motion carries. This moves us to our first reception of visitors for public comment. There's two opportunities in the meeting for public comment. Does anybody want to? For anything on the agenda? Nope. I didn't see anybody getting up, so there you go. Okay, action item number one, only, is the District 99 Education Foundation Grants.
All right, we have an early action item here just to recognize the donation from the Ed Foundation. They're now in our rolling grant window, so they'll be periodically throughout the year, hopefully, bringing future grants to the board for acceptance. We have two coming tonight for the board to approve. One is for a device called a Raspberry Pi, which is a small programmable microcomputer, and then the other one is for the Blue Puzzle Organization for trips related to special education, and the Blue Puzzle Group works with students with disabilities. Any questions on those items? And then we need a motion to approve them.
Questions?
I move the board to approve the donation in the amount of $1,599 for the purposes as presented.
Second motion.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Terry Pavisic.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
And Nancy Kupka.
Hi, motion carries, and thank you to the --
We have representatives from the foundation here to present the checks on behalf of the foundation.
Yes. Again, our goal as the 99 Foundation is to provide to our school community what tax dollars cannot, and so therefore we've decided to do this rolling grants. We used to do it once a year, and we have found that the teachers were saying, "Well, it's too late." So we've moved to this direction and started it last year, and we have found much greater acceptance from the faculty. They roll in now. You know, as the year progresses, they kind of say, "Hey, that might be a good opportunity for second semester," and so forth. So what I'd like to do is present to Mike Hines, who's here this evening, and this was a grant presented by him and Aaron Flanagan for the Raspberry Pi grant in the amount of $699. So -- Here, why don't you guys grab this one? Ooh, let's see, I want to drop it. Great. Okay. Mike, would you -- oh, thank you. Mike, could you explain a little bit what the grant involves?
So on behalf of our Women in Science Club, Women in STEM Club, we'd like to thank the D-99 Foundation for this grant. They've been very supportive of the science department over the years. This in particular is a little device that can hook as my little microprocessor, and this year we are very proud to not only partner with Illinois State University Center for Renewable Energy on how to use energy more sustainably in the community, but this year we have a new corporate sponsor, and that's Commonwealth Edison. And so Commonwealth Edison is coming on board to find out better ways to use the smart grid, and they are looking for a procedure, policy, or product that can help educate the community on how -- and so we see this as being part of possibly some mock-up of a smart grid, and so that's what the young ladies here are going to work with. Want to let you introduce yourselves, and then that way.
All right. Hi, I'm Gillian Braun, and I'm a leader of the DGN Women in STEM Club.
I'm Olivia Weaver, and I'm the other president of the Women in STEM Club. And yeah. So that's what we've been working on. We've been in the club for the past three years, which is how long it's been around at DGN, and it just got established as a club last year, so my mom thought I was lying about going to it. We're still working on those numbers, but you know what? They're on the rise, and that's all we care about, so.
That's great.
Yeah. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two years ago, Gillie got to present down at Motorola to the corporation to sponsor 30 schools now in this, and their group was picked to go down and present their innovative solution to problems.
What do you think in here? Engineering, mathematics?
I'm going to go into -- I'm planning on going into genetics.
Genetics, oh, smart move.
I'm going to go into conservation biology.
Smart move as well.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You got your picture.
The next grant was for $900 for the Special Services Department. It's called the Blue Puzzle Project, and the teachers who wrote the grant could not be here this evening because of flooded basements. So thank you for accepting our donation. I will definitely be getting some pictures with the kids at North, so thank you.
You have the puzzle.
I can't, no, I was not prepared to --
I can tell you what Blue Puzzle is.
Okay, please.
So Blue Puzzle is one of our clubs that our students actually initiated to help our students with autism and to spread awareness, and then to make them more comfortable in the community in our school activities. So it is a really wonderful club where our students interact from different groups that they maybe normally wouldn't be in, and so this is definitely going to help them because they can go out in the community and practice their skills. So we're very happy to have this club. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you will be seeing us throughout the school year with these awards, and we would like to encourage our staff to definitely keep submitting them between the different fundraisers that we have, Pizza Wars especially. We will be giving back to the school community the monies that we receive as donations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you and the foundation very much. You know, the amount of -- how many people are on the foundation now?
Seven?
Yeah, yeah.
It's an incredible amount of work, and you do it tirelessly and well, and you really do add so much to our community, and I'm getting a little choked up here, but you know, we really are appreciative of all of your efforts. It really is a wonderful, wonderful augmentation to our school. We're really grateful to have you all, so thank you very much.
Not all communities have education foundations. In fact, I believe most do not, so we're fortunate. Thank you.
Okay. We'll be under recommendation. I don't care about the rest of --
Sounds like such a left-out.
I don't care. Transportation update. I can barely wait.
Barely wait.
Well, you don't have to wait any longer.
Okay.
I'm going to turn this over to Mark.
Try to follow there.
And I'm used to hearing that sound right before I -- Fortunately, I have two items. First item really is transportation update. We're reflecting back a couple of years ago, and we had such a rough year starting up, and we had a lot of concerns this year about it just because the market for drivers has been incredibly high. It's very difficult to find drivers. There's just too many other options in the economy right now with it perking up and being better. So we kept on with -- they also changed, if you had a chance to catch the memo, I'm sure you did, they changed the manager for the terminal, which gave us an unknown quantity there, but he seemed to work out really well, Mike Peterson. He couldn't be with us tonight, but we kept in contact with them to make sure that he was getting the drivers we needed. And one of the things I think that was interesting was because we moved our year up, it kind of, we ended up with a staggered year between 68 and 58 and ourselves. Those are the two districts that we partner with under this contract. 68, I believe, opened a couple of days before us, the first day, and what it did is it gave the drivers an opportunity to run just one single route for a couple of days before they started the other one, and then some started on ours, and then 58 started after us. And so I think that helped a little bit with it. There was, both buildings said that it was one of the better years for the startup. So we're very pleased to see that. This is the fourth year of this five-year agreement, so we'll have one more year, and then we'll be out, we'll have to go back to the market again. It's a five-year deal. So that one is, I don't know if you have any questions about it, but we did have a couple of routes. We always do. I'll tell you the, I guess, the math behind this. Versatrans is a system that's used by many providers, and first student uses it. It's a matching software to match up where student addresses are of eligible riders and bus stops. And in high school situations, it's usually somewhere in the 30% to 35% of the kids that are eligible actually take the bus. So it's very difficult to understand, so it's not unusual for them to align 90 or 100 kids up with a particular stop because most of them don't show up and either walk or, not walk, but have other modes of transportation, drop, get dropped off, might drive their own cars. And so, but occasionally we get a couple of routes where it exceeds the limit. Our buses have 24 seats. They hold two, at the high school level, we typically count on two to a seat, so 48 is our maximum. We try and keep it in the 40 range if we can, and we're actually below that right now across, but a couple of buses were in the 52, 53 range, and so they had to triple up on seats. Kids don't like to do that, and there's a lot of disgruntled, you know, riders, and we try and fix that, so we moved some routes. But in order to move routes, you have to get a head count. You have to really know how many kids you have from the other stops, and it takes a week or two to do it, so it's a little bit -- it was only about one, I think, one or two buses. I think one at South and one at North. I think we each had, each had one that was a little rough. Other than that, though, it was a pretty good startup, so we're very pleased with how they handled it.
That's great. We've had many years of not-so-good startups, and not because of, not because of you or anybody in the, just because of how it was.
Oh, yeah, it's just it's been very difficult a couple of years, but now this is a good one.
We had another variable with the change in late starts as well that was factored in at the start of the year that seemed to work very well, so.
Yeah, that's true. And we also, just as a point, the late starts is something we're going to, we've agreed to pick up kids under the mile and a half just because some parents are not available at 9 o'clock to take their kids into school who normally would be and have set their schedule that way, and so we set some stops inside. There weren't many takers, and what we do is we have a couple of buses, the ones that come and drop off earliest and have time before they start their sender route, which follows ours, are sliding back through and going about a half a mile or three-quarters of a mile out to pick up kids. But we'll see how, when, you know, when it starts to get 19 below, we get a couple of those days, we'll see how many kids, you know, change their mind. The second topic is, I don't know if there's any questions or any comments about that.
It was almost as good as the 99.
The district has a flexible spending account, which is a government-allowed account by IRS to take pre-tax earnings and put it into an account. There's a $2,600 limit for a single per calendar year, and we've run this in alignment with our health fund, our health accounts, which, and our health plan year, which is a September through August plan year. It works good for some situations in that our largest employee group, the teachers, the faculty typically follow that year. They start in, you know, beginning of a school year and then actually in June, but it gives them the summer to actually get paid and also have insurance coverage if they do terminate with the district. But it does create some problems in that, and the insurance committee has been talking about this for about six or seven months now, so, but we've decided, at least for the flexible spending account, to do that right now, to change that to a calendar year so that it aligns with the IRS limitations, because that was confusing for some people. And so they'll enroll in November for the next calendar year, and then they'll be in alignment with that, and it's just easier. And we also will make, are planning to make a change to the plan, which IRS now allows you to roll over some of the balance. They've allowed us to do this for a few years, but we're finally going to take advantage of it, where if you haven't spent it at the end of the calendar year, you'll have, I think it's 30 or 60 days to spend it after into the next year, so we're going to, we're going to look at an option like that for this plan year. So in November, we'll be bringing to you a recommendation to update the flexible spending account plan document. But the regular insurance year I mentioned is also going with the September through and August fiscal year, and one thing that we've heard from the insurance committee, and there's several districts around us, Glenbard, Elmhurst, Hinsdale, I think, there's several districts around us that have calendar year plans, just like corporations, like most corporations do, and the benefit to the employees to have that is that if we have, our employees have a spouse that has a calendar year plan, they're trying to make a decision about, well, which coverage is best, which plan is best, and it's at two different points in time, and maybe they would take our plan from September to December and then want to opt to take the other plan, so it was difficult for them to actually get it all lined up, too. And there's really not much of a downside for us to change it to a calendar year. In fact, the big bonus for us, and it's been one of my issues, is that when we have open enrollment in May, so that we can get all of the employees who worked just on the 52 or, I'm sorry, 36-week year enrolled in the plan for the next September, we have to guess at what the actual claims will be for April, May, June, July, August, and so it gives us five months of guesswork. And so we have to use history, like trend or different estimates to try and project that amount. It'd be better for us if we did a calendar year startup so that we would have everybody enrolling in November along with the flexible spending account and only have maybe two months of guesswork, the most recent, so we, because we wouldn't have to have this open period for summer that we lose, lose people. And it has caused our rates to fluctuate. Some years we have no increase, some years we have a 16% or 17% increase. We've had as high as 20% in the last decade. So you're guessing at those amounts, and this will help, I think, smooth out the cost of the plan in terms of how we estimate our premiums. So this would occur at the end of 2018. So what we'll do is our plan, our current plan will run till September, I'm sorry, August of 2018, and then we will do a short period through the end of the calendar year, and it's a little tricky. There's a self, since we're self-insured, there's a risk to that, what they call the attachment point for aggregate risk, where we have stop-loss insurance, so that if some of our claims exceed a certain dollar amount, I think it's $115,000 for any one individual over the plan year, this insurance would kick in. It's like a high-cost protection for us. Running that short period of time, it's going to be difficult to, we're still working on which is a fair way to work a premium for that short period of time, and it'll probably be based on what our experience is leading up to that short year at that time, and we'll have a recommendation at that time on how to handle that short period. And then we'll just go back into a 12-month insurance program with that part of it.
You can't, you can't expand the enrollment period to 15 months?
Well, Blue Cross right now has told us that they don't want to do that, to expand it that way, and actually then it expands the risk on the other end because now they wouldn't curtail it, there would, it would be a higher risk and higher premium. So we're trying to find out what's, what's fair, and right now they're not ready to take us on through the end of 2018 through December. So we're just going to go with the plan year, and there will be some employee education as well, so we're going to be making sure everybody understands what's going on and hopefully. But it's, the insurance committee was unanimous for those who, you know, wanting to change it to a calendar year basis.
And just a reminder, the insurance committee is made up of representatives of all employee groups. We kind of work together as a team in the best interest of the insurance plan for everybody, so.
Yeah, it's been working very well. I think it's really good to have everybody involved.
Any other questions?
That's my other piece there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again. Giving 99 Foundation a bunch of their money. Essa?
Essa, back from last month, as I promised, as Jean and I promised, this will be an ongoing theme from now until forever. So we thought that after last month, when we wore you down with graduation rates, we tackle a simpler concept this month, which is GPA and that portion of Essa. So Jean is going to lead us through some of the discussion on how this looks for the district.
Okay. So today we are going to look at, GPA is Dr. Thiele said, and we're going to look at it in terms of two of the categories that we looked at last time. Distinguished Scholar, which is the highest and really meant to be just for the absolute highest group of students in terms of GPA, and then College and Career Ready. And any student who falls in that distinguished group is automatically college and career-ready. We're also going to look today just at one part of ACT, and that will be those students that meet the criteria to be distinguished scholar, because you'll see in just a moment there's several criteria. And then in the next few months, as we talked about last time, we'll look at AP data, some dual credit, SAT programs of study, and so forth. So, there we go. Distinguished Scholar is a 3.75 to a 4.0 GPA. You'll note that this is not weighted. Typically, when we refer to grades, we oftentimes speak of weighted grades, so that makes this criteria even that much higher. Also, to be a distinguished scholar, you have to have an ACT of 30, that's the composite score, or an SAT of 1,400, 95% attendance rate for both junior and senior year, and then the career-ready indicators that we looked at last time. So we just took a look at the data from the last five years, just GPA. We're ranging basically from about 5% to 15%, depending on the year, and we're talking about a very small group of our population, and that's just the first criteria.
Is there a state target for these numbers?
I'm sorry?
Is there a state target for these numbers?
Just the 3.75 to the 4.0.
No, but is there, is there a target for percentage of --
No. We don't have to have like 10% of our students in distinguished.
Okay.
Good, good point. So when we take the students who have that 3.75 to the 4.0, so this isn't all students, it's just that subset of students, and we look at those students that have a composite GPA of 30, we're hovering between, pretty much between about 58% and about 72%. So that's the students who already have a 3.75 to a 4.0 GPA, and those that had a 30 or higher composite ACT score.
So that's 70% of the 15%.
Yes.
Okay.
Because again, that's one of the criteria. There's a few more, but we're just looking at those two for today. As we talk about college and career-ready, students just need to have a 2.8 to a 4.0, 95%, which is what we saw before for distinguished attendance rate, junior, senior year, and then the pathway endorsement that we looked at some of that last time that we met.
Now, this is one that has a target, right? The target is that every student through one of these pathways is college or career, college and career-ready.
So what I'm going to show you first is just one pathway, and that is with the GPA, or one part of that, I should say. So those students with a 2.8 to a 4.0, that of course is going to include those distinguished students, right? Because they had a 3.75 to a 4.0, so they're lumped into this group as well. So depending on the year, as you can see, you know, we're ranging again around, hovering around 60%, depending on the year, and going up closer to 70% in some years. But that's not the only way a student can be college and career-ready, because as we looked at last time, same criteria that I just showed you, but there's that or. So what is the or? The or is, this is the same chart from last time, I'm just trying to bring us back to where, you know, what we looked at last time, that there's other ways which you have to meet this in order to be also considered college and career-ready. So those students who fall below a 2.8 or don't meet that other criteria can also be college and career-ready by at least one academic indicator in ELA, one in math, identifying a career area of interest, and then three career-ready indicators during their junior or senior year.
Remind me what ELA is?
English Language Arts.
Thank you.
So as we saw before, some of these data points we're going to look at in upcoming meetings. So for example, we're going to talk about AP exams. We're going to talk about dual credit. We're going to talk about ACT subject scores, just, those are upcoming topics. And then the three career-ready indicators, this is the same list that we showed last time. Again, we don't have the rules for this yet, right? They're making the rules. We, this is what we know right now. What does that workplace learning experience look like? We don't know yet, and some of that will be determined by, by the local, by the board. So we will have some say in some of this. Exactly what exactly this looks like in the end, we're not really sure yet. Some of this we will have data on. So for example, we could pull data on participation in two or more co-curricular activities, but we don't necessarily keep data right now of consecutive summer employment. So some of this data we do not necessarily have.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Just curious, in terms of academic indicators, why is there not a science academic indicator?
State has pretty much always looked at math and English. However, and I don't have that document, the state is also looking for, when they're evaluating schools, the science test is part of that. I don't have it in the --
It will be, not next year, the year after.
Not next year. Yeah, it's the following year, and then it's going to be, goes from zero next year to 5% or 7%. But there is a science test. It's a life science test, so students who are enrolled in biology or have not passed a full year of biology take that test. We've done it two years now, and we're still waiting for scores, even from the first.
I just, I just would have thought science would have had a little bit more of a prominent position on here, but.
But it does matter in terms of how the schools are assessed. This is how individual students.
When you say science will be a part of that, a part of the assessment or?
How the school is assessed. So they'll be looking at, for example, our number of our students who met the state standard for SAT, the number of students who are EL students who met the access reclassification score, those kinds of things. So the career-ready indicators are other ways. Students must have three of those in order to meet the college and career-ready. So we looked at GPA for those two categories. Distinguished Scholar, 3.75 to 4.0, college career-ready, 2.8 to 4.0, and then to be a distinguished scholar, you have to have an ACT of 30 or higher. And then next time, we're going to move on to AP, and then we'll continue going through these items as more information's available.
I have a question about, one of my favorite topics, dual credit. So I know that we're looking at dual credit for academics, and right now we have some programs where we have students who go to COD for career training, for culinary arts.
For TCD.
TCD, that's what I was trying to -- I was going to say TCD, I thought, no, I got it wrong, so I'm glad I had it right. Is there a chance that we will expand our TCD?
Efforts?
Efforts, yeah.
We pretty much enroll students in all of TCD programs if there's interest. We have typically set a number of seats, and we haven't even met those seats in the last two, maybe even three years. So we allocate X number of seats, and then students sign up, it's through student choice, and we haven't even met those seats, so we do not have students --
Banging down the doors.
We haven't even met what our threshold is. We, we have not restricted students and we haven't even met those seats. So, we do not have students.
Banging down the doors.
We haven't even met what our threshold is. We have not restricted students in years from going to TCD. And even last year, when I thought we were gonna be close to the threshold, I told our Assistant Principals for Counseling and Student Support Services to let me know if we were there, and if we had a waiting list, and we didn't even get to that point.
This?
Oh, well, I guess my question was just, are we going to look, maybe there are other areas that students would be more interested in?
For dual credit?
For, or for like a TCD.
So, our, we're part of TCD, of Deos, so our students would go there. We really haven't had students express a need beyond that, but we do offer some dual credit courses in-house, too. Most of those are falling in our Architecture, Computer Science, Introduction to Teaching, which Val teaches at South. But that's pretty much where students would go, would be TCD if they're gonna follow the full pathway.
What were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say, it could be a topic for another time, but how do we advertise to the students about the TCD?
It goes through our Academic Planning Guide, as well as counselor conversations. So, we have an Academic Planning Guide that's on our website, and all students have access to it, but also teachers make recommendations and actually meet with students. So, for example, when I taught Social Studies, my students, we would talk about what courses they could take the next year, find out what their interests are, explain what the courses are about, and then students would.
Field trips sophomore year, I think it is, right?
We take kids out to TCD's open house when they do it, and TCD representatives come to our curriculum nights, like in January, when we do open house for incoming freshmen, so.
And we had.
Promoted pretty well.
We had open house last month at TCD, and our students are great, 'cause they're, you know, out there answering all, and it's not just students from, that are at TCD right now that are there, but students who are interested will go in and actually check it out as well.
I'm glad to hear that there is some type of advertisement, because I'm certain the students are reading that Academic Planning Guide from cover to cover.
I don't think so.
I'm sure.
But our counselors share information as well.
Okay.
I just had a question. What are IB courses and exams?
Let me take it. So, IB, Initial Backlorrett, is very much like AP. So, it's a, it's an international program that's like a college readiness program for students. Most schools either have IB or AP.
Oh, okay.
And we have AP.
And what would make a student choose dual credit? Like, I, 'cause I've never really been exposed to that, so I don't really know what it is.
So, dual credit means that the student is enrolled in a high school course, so it's taught at the high school, or in the case, TCD, but TC is like an extension of us, so it's at the high school, in which it's taught by the high school teacher, but the student gets college credit as well.
Okay.
So, it's an actual transcripted credit. So, when that student leaves North or South High School, they actually have a college transcript from a college, in this case, it's COD. Why a student would pick dual credit, I mean, it really varies. So, for most students, they pick the class, not necessarily just because it's dual credit. So, for example, we have dual credit for AP Computer Science. A lot of our students, they're interested in computer science, so they take AP Computer Science. It is a dual credit course, and they get dual credit through COD, but I'm not sure that's what attracted them to the course. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Introduction to Teaching, another dual credit course, students aren't gonna take that just because it's dual credit, they're gonna take it because they're interested in teaching.
Is, like, are classes that are dual credit, are those like next to the class, like when we see them, like for registration purposes and stuff?
On the registration form?
Yeah, it's all, it's all in the Academic Planning Guide. So, for example, Architecture, Arc One is a dual credit course. It says very clearly, you know, dual credit.
And that guide is what our counselors sit down with our students and go through. It's not like we expect the students to go through it on their own.
No, no. Every student, you know, every student meets with their counselor, they talk about what your stu, oh, sorry, what their career interests are, kind of when you do the, let's see, you're at North, so group guidance, you're familiar with group guidance? Yeah. So, that's when they talk it through, too.
Okay.
I share.
Great questions, thank you.
Share Nancy's interest in this, I mean, we, we'd like to see more offerings, and it wouldn't necessarily mean that the rigor or the content of the class would even change too much. I, I have a son who's at a school in Ohio, a college in Ohio right now, and he's got, you know, other kids that he's going to school with, that came in with all kinds of dual credit. And, and I can tell you that his experience has been that some of the classes he took here were more rigorous than some of the classes that some of these other students got dual credit for coming in.
Okay.
You know, so it's, it's really an advantage that we could offer our, our students, and we've been after this now for a couple of years, few years, and.
So, I'm gonna use this as an opportunity to walk through the door you just opened, Mike. So, your mistake. Yeah. One of the challenges, like you speak of Ohio, Indiana's another state, and there's a lot of states out there that have been much more aggressive in pursuing dual credit opportunities for their high school students. One of the major things that, remember, last year, a major legislative issue was evidence-based funding across the state. Now that that's been taken care of, in many ways, one of the things that schools across Illinois, and then our legislative representatives are having major discussions around is ramping up how dual credit is handled through the legislature in Illinois this year. So, this is a major focus of Lend and our other partners in the area. Both Lynn Panega at Lake Park High School and myself have been leading the Lend group on this, in presenting and advocating for it. We presented at the Illinois High School District's Organization last month, in Springfield on it, so this will be a, a major topic of energy, effort, and interest across the state this year.
So, Mike, so you're saying that they're actually getting credit at the college for this? Okay, 'cause I was ununderstanding, it was something just in conjunction with college of the pay, so.
No, it's transcripted credit.
Yeah.
And we have partnerships with several, that's part of the challenge in Illinois, is that you have to broker a deal with each individual university that you wanna arrange for dual credit with. So, depending on the course, we may be able to broker a deal with one university for dual credit, with another one, it's prohibitive. So, part of the challenge in Illinois is finding the right university to partner with, you know, for the variety of requirements that they're going to have to be able, for us to offer dual credit.
Yeah. I, I think with the cost of college, this would, is an awesome addition.
Well, it does, and we talk about that quite a bit, about how it could save some money, just like with AP. The other thing I've discovered is that it, it helps the students have more flexibility in their schedules, so if, if normally you'd have to take, you might have to take 18 or 19 credit hours to, you know, to, on a path, now maybe you're, you're satisfying the requirements towards your degree with only needing to take 15 or 16, and it opens up the opportunity for double major, maybe even double degree, which is.
Stress relief.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So, I mean, so it's just, it's a really, it's something that we need to do.
The research is really strong, that students that take a dual credit course are highly successful and complete college at a much higher rate. So, we will, as we get down the road, I would anticipate that somewhere in November, December, as we get further along with our progress with the state with this, that we'll be coming back with an update.
Excellent. BJ had another comment.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I think, especially after hearing this, like, I didn't really know that much about dual credit, but it sounds like it's, it can be a really big advantage, and I feel like more students would be interested if they knew what it consisted of, so. 'Cause I have friends that go to other schools that are taking like dual credit courses, and I never really understood what that was, but I don't know, I would take it, seems interesting. That seems like positive.
One of the other positives is you're not relying on one, on a test on one day, you get a grade.
Yeah.
Now, depending what the school is that you get that credit through, it may or may not be accepted, like anywhere else, if you transferred, but.
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot, yeah.
More coming on that one.
Okay. Anything else on Esa? Thank you, and thank you for breaking it down, 'cause it is such an overwhelming subject.
It's huge, Bill, yes.
Okay, Master Facility Plan, Community Engagement Update.
All right, so Jill will help me on this one, but as we've discussed with the board, we're in the community engagement portion of the Master Facility Plan, where we're reaching out to the community with the options that the board is looking at, to gather feedback through upcoming surveys around what the community would like us to do around master facilities. Two mailings went home to all households in the district, one a letter outlining the Master Facility Plan, and then, I'm gonna steal yours as a prop here, and this beautiful brochure went home to all families, that includes the FAQs. And I'll remind the board that this is much of the work of the Community Task Force, that we've taken all of this information to, to try to create informational, unbiased information that's easy for the community to understand, that we're releasing it in little chunks at a time, that's why the multiple mailers, and especially numbers, are coming out in small, digestible chunks. We have also going on over the next two weeks, three remaining community meetings, Thursday, October 19th, so this Thursday, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at South, then this coming Saturday, from 9:30 to 11:30 AM at North, and then, the following Saturday, October 28th, from 9:30 to 11:30 at South. We are, Jill and I are also working this week on putting together video segments on each of the major themes within the Master Facility Plan, so that those that are unable to attend one of those meetings could still hop online and watch the presentation. Anything I'm missing, Jill?
The materials are out on our website, so anytime you wanna see the presentation that we're using, it's being updated live after every presentation to try to improve and respond to feedback that we've received, and video segments from.
Those are grid.
Presentations are there as well.
I like those video segments.
And then, the survey is being mailed out next, starting next week, so all households will receive a mailed survey to respond to and collect their feedback.
This is, this is a really great piece.
It is.
You know, everybody that I've talked to has been really impressed with it and enjoyed, you know, looking at the questions and what it's gonna, really boiling down what it's gonna cost. Oh, sorry.
I'll just share, my daughter actually took a look at it, and she was like, wow, I'm not gonna be there to enjoy that, but she was impressed by the whole concept, so.
I will say that the board has confused some folks in the community in the fact that many boards don't go out with this much information until they've put a referendum question on a ballot, that it is unusual for a school district to do this much legwork upfront. So, there is a little bit of confusion in the community that they think there actually is a question on a ballot somewhere. So, that is the biggest misconception that we're correcting at this point, that this is an information gathering phase to inform the board. So, but that, you know, 'cause it's just unusual how, how aggressive the board has been in seeking community feedback and engagement during this process. So, then you get a lot of kudos as a board for seeking that kind of information.
Well, people get a lot of mail, so I think, I mean, it would be, wouldn't it be surprising if somebody takes a quick glance at it and thinks it, you know, oh, well, without, you know, so once you read into it, I think the information's very clear. I mean, I don't think that any of the information that we're putting out is misleading in any way.
No, and, and once they get the survey, it'll be very clear that this was to inform you to get, get your feedback, but it's just that this is coming in those stages.
But it's interesting, I had a comment from somebody today about how, well, they hadn't looked at everything in a whole lot of detail yet, but seemed pretty positive about it. They, they had six months, though, till they were gonna have to make, and I said, no, actually, you've got till December. We're doing this now so that we can, we can better understand which way we should go forward. Because we don't wanna go forward with something unless we have some feel that, that the community's really gonna support it, and that we're doing the right thing by our constituents, so, so really, just a month and a half or so. Did I really say that? December's that close.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be honest.
Yep.
Well, and, and thank you to Jill and Dr. Thiele, and everybody involved in getting this together, 'cause this has been a monumental effort.
Yes.
And we're gonna take full credit for it, but you did all the work, so.
So, thank you, Jill.
Freedom of Information request, have we had some of those?
Yeah, we've had a few, three, and three responded to.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Consent Agenda. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, which consists of Personnel Report, Appointment Certified, Contract Adjusted, Certified, Appointment Classified, Leave of Absence, Certified Leave of Absence, Classified, Transfer of Position, Classified, as well as Personnel Report, Registrations, Resignations, Classified, Personnel Report, Termination, Classified, Financial Pages, and Student Tour.
Since you took the time to read all that, so moved.
Second. Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye.
Consent Agenda passes, and we move on to Recommendations for Action, Wheelchair Accessible Van.
I will turn this over to Jim.
Okay, thanks, quick one for you tonight. We put bid documents together for the replacement of a wheelchair accessible van at our North Campus. Two years ago, we replaced the same piece of equipment at our South Campus. So, our specifications were sent to six vendors, two vendors put in bids. This is replacing an 18-year-old vehicle at North. It has had its day. It needs replacement, we wanted to do it a year ago, but we waited one more year, we put some money into repairs, so it's due. We're meeting all of the ADA certification requirements with this vehicle, and it is within budget, so tonight, we're asking the board to approve the low submitted bid by Transit Works in the amount of $44,599.
And we congratulate the old one since it's 18 years old.
Correct.
Boy, did we get a lot of.
Only if it meets criteria.
Only if it's ready for college and career is ready. So, is, is that a motion?
I, I move that we accept this bid for $44,599.
Accept the motion.
Go ahead. You have a question?
Oh, yeah. So, I see the difference, and I'm sure you guys do, is about $219, is that right? And one is in Ohio, and then the other one is in Illinois, so is there any transportation to get it to, from Ohio to Illinois?
Actually, the one in Ohio is seven weeks for delivery, the other one was 18 weeks.
Oh.
So, actually, the delivery from the further one, and that is the company that we purchased it from the last time, they're a little bit quick run turnaround, it's 2018, so we're in good shape with them.
Okay.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Nancy Cupca?
Aye.
Motion passes, enjoy your new van.
We will, in, what, eight weeks?
Eight weeks.
Seven weeks.
Policy Committee report, first reading.
So, just a reminder, Policy Committee met, I can, Dan can join me on any of this if you'd like to, to discuss several items. This is the first reading of those items, so Dan and I, and Rick, who's not here tonight, will ask you to peruse these over the next few weeks, and if you have any questions or comments on those policies, please get them to us before the next board meeting, so that if there's anything we need to address before approval, that we can to the entire board.
And I believe just about every single one of these changes was, they're recommended by.
They're all out of press.
College press.
And most of them are not significant in nature, a lot of, a lot of cleanup, yeah.
Yeah, more cleanup.
I have, I have a question, but it's not really related to the policy, and I didn't put it on the agenda, I'm sorry, but I was just curious about our dress code changes, and has, you know, the sky fallen in since we let girls wear spaghetti straps, or have there been any repercussions?
Nothing's made it to my desk, editor Janice?
I would argue that we probably have had less dress code violations. Now, I partially think we talked about it a lot more before the start of the school year, and it was a point of emphasis, so I think it's as much that we talked about it as any change in policy.
Thank you. Okay, and when do we need any questions to, I'm sorry?
Within the next couple of weeks, so that we have enough time to respond before, these don't come up until the next actual board meeting, so if, if you could have anything to us by the board. to us by the board workshop, that would give us enough time to respond to it.
Okay, reception of visitors, public comment. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Anybody want to address? Seeing none, we'll move on to communication announcements. Uh, Len, on?
I think we did meet since the last time we even, we had the, uh, presentation on the evidence-based funding model, um-
Which board member, Renner, was the featured speaker on?
That's true. And, uh, nothing really new to report, it was just sort of a background of the mechanics of the evidence-based funding model, because there's been a lot of iterations of the law over the last few years, and, um, it's a rather complex formula. Uh, and then, we're meeting in a few weeks to discuss dual credit.
Bless you.
Bless you.
So, that's, that's all I have to report at this time.
Okay, I am just looking for my notes. So, for SASID, um, basically, we are continuing to meet to talk about some issues related to the organization of the staff at SASID, uh, they're continuing to work on their contract, um, uh, and, and, tch, 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 sorry, I'm trying to find something, and I forgot what it is. Um, oh, here it was. And their human resource director, she completed the requirements to become a professional human capital leader in education, which is quite a, quite an achievement. So, that's primarily what I've got to report from SASID. Uh, 99 Education Foundation?
Uh, well, we, we approved the, the grants that you saw tonight, so that was a very good thing, and then we're just, uh, plugging along. We're working at, uh, getting some new members. We have one new member in our group, and, uh, uh, so if you know of anybody who would like to be on our foundation, uh, be sure and contact us.
IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards, anything, Mike?
There's triple I coming up in November, and I see we've got a invitation to a reception, um, and, uh, and just, uh-
Did we get the, the thing on the, um, resolutions last year?
Last meeting, that's white.
Was that, was that in our, our packet last meeting?
It's also up on our website.
So, we need to probably look at those, don't we?
Take a look at them, let me know. I'm sure I'll be, I'll be more engaged in that, uh, coming up here, because I've got to, I'm going to have to attend the, um, the meeting-
Delegate meeting.
The delegate meeting beforehand, to tell them whatever you want me to tell them, so. Um, and, uh, I also just wanted to mention, I, I had a great time, uh, last week, uh, sitting on a panel for Constitutional, Constitution Day at South for U.S. history.
Thank you.
And so, it was, that was kind of a neat, uh, a neat experience, and the, and the students asked several questions about their rights, including issues concerning dress code, so, um, it was, it was a great experience. So, if any can get there, some, you know, it's a good, good thing to do. So, they'll do it again next year, I'm understanding.
So, PJ, I'm not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Was there any, like, talk among students about dress code, because we, you like some of them?
My junior year, um, a lot of people in the hallways were just talking about, I mean, especially girls, just saying that, they were like, oh, what is a shoulder going to do, like, why does it matter that our shoulders are showing? And, in a way, I kind of thought the same thing, but, I mean, I understand, like, it's school, like, you're there to learn, not to dress. Um, but, like, this year, I know that, um, a lot of, like, I don't know, it's just kind of easier just walking around school and, like, seeing that people aren't getting called down just because of spaghetti scrap, spaghetti straps, or, like, not getting stopped in the hallway, asked to, like, put a jacket on, or, I don't know, I feel like people aren't trying to violate it. Like, people are just kind of, especially when it was hot, like, a lot of people were worried that, um, with dress code, they would be, like, dress coded because they're wearing spaghetti straps because of the heat, or, um, I don't know, something being, like, too, too revealing, but, um, a lot of people, I don't think I've tried to necessarily violate it, so I think it's been a good thing that it was updated.
Okay, anything else?
While we're on IASB, just a reminder for those of you attending the two-page division meeting, uh, this Thursday, uh, Mr. Wu Gezer will be representing the district, uh, administration there, um, since I have a community night that night at South, and, um, we will have you mixed with other local area school boards, like we did the last time, and this time, we're doing name cards on tents, so you'll have an assigned seat. Scott will decide who you're sitting with.
Oh. All right.
Who all is going Thursday?
I was just going to ask the same thing.
Just three?
Okay, we'll talk about it afterwards. Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Uh, upcoming board meetings, November 6th, we'll have a special workshop meeting here at the Administrative Service Center at 7:00 PM, and then November 30th will be our regular business meeting at 7:30 here at the-
20th.
What?
20th.
The 20th.
What did I say?
30th.
The 30th.
Oh, November 20th, I was thinking about Halloween, November 20th. Is your orange shirt. Uh, November 20th, regular business meeting at 7:30, thanks, Cheryl. Here, right here at the Administrative, uh, Service Center, so if there's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn?
You know what, I just want to say, I went to the, um, uh, presentation of the Army Band, and it was very nice. It was a wonderful presentation, and, uh, we have two young men who are in the Army Band, and, uh, they're going to be playing at the halftime of a game in, in-
Houston, I think.
-January.
High school All-American football.
Yes, yes. So, it's quite an honor that we have, uh, two folks, and this is the, this is the sixth, sixth year.
Six in six years. Two this year, makes six in six years.
Got it, but it's five out of the six years we've, okay.
Yeah, so it is quite an honor, and it's really, uh, wonderful, so.
Terry was nearly knocked off her feet next to it.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, I wanted to start the, uh, I wanted to start the meeting with that video.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I heard about it. Yeah, I gotta see, where's the video?
Well, we need to have the next meeting, I forgot about that, we're waiting for the next meeting.
Yes.
Just illustrated the need for a larger stage.
There we go.
There you go, yes, yes, it was an interesting talk, but no, uh, that aside, those, those students, congratulations to them, yeah.
Something to be proud of, for you, so many people doing so many wonderful things.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Teachers, students, administrators. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.